Good evening. I will call the regular meeting of December 19, 2022 to order. Please be kind enough to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Could we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Jonathan Ramsey, Mary Ann Rosa.
Here.
Ken Demers, Robert De Sina.
Here.
Anthony Debona.
Here.
Gary Lafferty.
Here.
Robert Ritalik.
Here.
Denise Russ.
Here.
And Rachel Ryan.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the council?
Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Dinsmore, and I live at 35 Reynolds in Watertown. Tonight, I am here to offer comments concerning the job description for the Director of Human Resources that you're being asked to approve. As some of you know, I am a retired Town of Watertown employee, and I know firsthand that it is imperative for our town to have a Director of Human Resources. I understand that position is needed now more than ever. The position of Director of Human Resources is a crucial position in any organization, and the town needs to be able to draw from a pool of the most qualified, credentialed, and experienced candidates. In the job description, under qualifications, the Director of Human Resources is expected to have a high school diploma, GED, or an associate's degree in public administration, human resources, or a related field, and more than four years of increasing responsible work experience, including labor relations, workers' compensation, and benefits administration experience. The Director of Human Resources is a professional and prominent position in any organization. To choose an applicant whose academic credentials are two years of college or less is to choose an applicant who does not have the professional credentials expected for this high-level management position. My research on the credentials of a Director of Human Resources is very clear in that candidates for Director of Human Resources must have a minimum of a bachelor's degree and preferably a master's degree with at least five years of human resource management experience. Typically, an associate's degree in public administration or human services qualifies one for an entry-level position, such as a clerk or an administrative assistant. Applicants for a Director of Human Resource position must also come to the table with professional certifications. There is no mention of any required certifications needed to assume the role as Director of Human Resources for the Town of Watertown. In Connecticut, the average Director of Human Resources salary as of November 22, 2022 is $118,901, but the range falls between $106,126 and $132,875. However, these numbers didn't specify the differences in salaries for a municipality position versus a position in the private sector. If the town council chooses to ignore the professional credentials required of a Director of Human Resources and hires someone with an associate's degree or less as the Director of Human Resources, will that person's salary be competitive to the salaries of professionals with the expected bachelor's or master's degrees? You also are being asked to approve the job description for a full-time social services clerk. The social services clerk job description indicates that the applicant is expected to have a high school diploma, a GED, or at most, an associate's degree in human services. This job description for the town's social services clerk has the same expected education levels as those listed for the Director of Human Resources. And if I may just repeat that, this job description for the town's social services clerk has the same expected education levels as those listed for the Director of Human Resources. Based on the duties and responsibilities described in the Director of Human Resources job description, this position requires a seasoned human resources professional. I implore you to not accept this job description you have before you for the Director of Human Resources. Please send it back with the expectation that the education levels of the candidates equal the minimum requirements expected of Directors of Human Resources throughout the state and the country. The employees and residents of this town deserve to have the highest qualified and educated municipal professionals as those employed in other towns throughout the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Al Mickle, 95 Woodvine Avenue. I missed the last town council meeting because I would have certainly liked to sign the civility thing. I'll try to be as civil as I can be. Of course, the first thing I'm going to talk about is public participation. You can't get an answer for certain questions without going to the administration, and most of the questions I ask here certainly should be known by all of you here. So I'm not sure why you don't want to talk to me. There are many people that come here with questions and are put off. In the past, public participation was normal. As a matter of fact, the rules for the town council says in 2016, public participation had time limits on it. So I hope that you really think about getting to be able to communicate with the citizens in the town through this venue. Now, also about the civility thing, I think there's some boards and commissions chairman that really need to be reminded about civility. So I'm hoping this will be extended to boards and commissions also. Just as an aside, the audit for 2022 ought to be done pretty soon. I'm hoping to see it on the website soon. Okay. Now, I don't think I can speak as eloquently as the previous speaker on the job description for a Director of Human Resources. The town has taken the time out to check about what resources were needed. They hired a consultant to answer those questions. But I always thought it would be not a director, but someone to handle human resources questions. So the previous speaker clearly said you really need a qualified person to be a Director of a department. So I hope you really take that in under consideration. A small thing that I always found interesting on job descriptions, the clerk has physical responsibilities to crawl. The Director doesn't. It must be a job-level thing that you have to crawl at one level and you don't have to crawl at the next one. Those things should be taken out of these job descriptions. They go through all sorts of requirements for seeing, hearing, crawling, walking, being able to focus your eyes, colorblindness. And then at the bottom of all these things says, oh, by the way, equal opportunity says we'll take care if you have a disability. Why put all that stuff in there if you're going to handle people with disabilities? Oh, there's a transfer of $50,000 from Tyler Software to software, an online item called In the job description for the Director, it talked about HR software. I'm wondering if that $50,000 was in anticipation for HR software. I would also suggest software is a rather broad topic, especially when it's going to the IT department. I wonder what we needed for. Maybe more description in the transfer might be informative. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Yes, please.
Catherine Camerow, 31 Cottage Place in Oakville. So I don't know what I missed, so I hope I'm not repeating what other people have talked about, but I do notice that Mr. Mickle was talking about the job descriptions that are in your package, and I found them to be a little bit odd. I still find it really bizarre to say you have to climb and crawl because for a position that's typically in an office at a desk, it's like, are you in the Army or, you know, are you going to work in an office? It's kind of weird. I know if I looked at that, I would definitely say, what is it they want me to do? It's very bizarre. And I noticed, too, that it's in one description and not in another. So anyway, I think it was in another job description recently, too, so I just don't get it. The other thing that I noticed is for the HR person, in their job description, it started off at the top, it said that the town manager directs them, and I'm sorry, I left my copy in the car, and then it goes into what they do. And what's weird to me on that is usually it's everything that your job description is, and then you're sort of, you know, it's not like somebody's directing you to do this because you know what your job is, so you do these duties. It's not like somebody has to be standing over you. It's just, to me, it's kind of weird. I'm not sure what that means. If somebody has to come in every day and say to the town manager, what am I doing today? I mean, that's what it sounds like. I don't know if that would be a turnoff to someone. I know if I'm qualified for a job, I'd kind of be like, why am I having somebody that I have to report to every day that's giving me my duties? I know what they are. So I thought that was a little weird as well. The other thing I wanted to comment on unrelated, you also have in your announcement tonight for the meeting that this meeting will be an in-person meeting and also will be available via Zoom in listen-only mode. So that tells me that people can't participate remotely. The exact same notice was on the recent planning and zoning meetings agenda. We had a public hearing. However, Mr. Antonetti was allowed to participate by Zoom, and I consider that when a person reads this, they're not coming to, they're only going to be in person for a public hearing. And by saying that, you've excluded anyone who would have participated by Zoom, and I believe I can file a complaint with the Freedom of Information Commission because you've actually excluded members of the public from participating in a public hearing when you've allowed someone else to, and that can't be right. So I'm going to keep my mouth shut, but if it happens again, I will be going to FOI and asking them to find the town for keeping members of the public out of a meeting. You can't, it's got to be one or the other. It can't be somebody can do it and other people can't. It just can't be like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close public participation and move on to minutes. Do we have a motion for the minutes?
I make a motion that the minutes from the last town council meeting of December 5, 2022 be accepted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anyone have any corrections? Hearing no corrections, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Under Chairman's report. I would just point out to you, we did receive a memo from Lisa Carew, the Director of Park and Rec, that the golf course rates for the military will remain the same, and we thank them for hearing our comments at the last meeting when that came up. For myself and on behalf of the council, I would like to formally wish the residents and the employees of the town Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, happy whatever celebration you are taking, and a healthy New Year. A special thank you to the police and fire departments for their care of the town and all of us in the past year, and to the highway department, thank you for the work you're going to do in the next couple of months, and stay safe. Let's move on. Any committee reports? Oh, I did skip over you, didn't I? I do that every time, sorry.
Turn. So I actually do not have anything for managers' report tonight, but Sue, our finance director, who's at home, would like to just give an update on our audit.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to inform you all that I have filed for an extension for our fiscal year 2022 audit. The new due date is going to be January 31, '23. The decision was made after counseling with King-King and Associates. I wanted to make sure that the audit had all the correct information that they needed to complete the CAFR. Some of the factors that came into play in making this decision were switching to the new software and employee changes on both the town and the Board of Ed side. Many reports needed to be rebuilt for the audit and had to be rebuilt for the audit, which takes a lot of time, and I want to be very accurate and clear with everything. I've been informed that this is a very common thing that happens with municipalities when the software change happens in its first full year, and this would be our first full year in the new system. With this extension, I truly feel confident that we'll be able to complete and meet all the requirements that we have to for the audit. On another note, in your packet, you all received a new budget schedule for the upcoming year. We did put a lot more meetings in place. This way, the departments will be able to explain in detail, greater detail, their budgets, explaining their revenue expenditures, and once everybody agrees to these dates, I'll make sure I get them out.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me? Anybody have any questions for Sue?
Sue, yes. I know it was discussed that the town council would have like a separate meeting possibly so we could discuss everything, but on the agenda, I don't see where it's just a town council. Am I not seeing it, or we're not going to do that?
I wasn't aware of a separate meeting. All the meetings will be public. There's extra special meetings that have been scheduled so we could spread out all the departments, and there won't be so many, like, departments at one time. So if you look at the calendar, we added some extra dates.
Okay. Thank you.
But they will be public meetings.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair, just to clarify what Councilmember Russ was asking, is that I made an offer to council members to actually go through the line items and see more detail. That was not to be done in public, but just for their benefit so that they could be better, they would better understand what they would be looking at during the public meetings. I'm happy to do that for anybody that would like that, but it was not meant to be done in public.
So it'll be an individual meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Do you have anything else in your report?
I will save it for the line items.
Okay. Let's move on to, there are no subcommittee reports, let's move on to item 9A, new business.
Consider authorizing the town manager.
No.
No, excuse me. I move to approve the resolution and authorize the town manager to execute and deliver documents associated with the Town of Watertown's opt-out of the State of Connecticut accessory dwelling unit provisions of Public Act Number 29-29, 21-29.
Is there a second? Second. Are there questions?
Can we get a brief explanation for the record?
Right. Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members. Mark Masood, Director of Land Use Administrator, here on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town manager to request that you complete a process initiated by the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is to, at this point, opt out of some of the provisions of Public Act 2129 relative to accessory dwelling units. So in 2021, the state legislature passed some fairly comprehensive revisions to the land use regulations relative to accessory dwelling units and, in essence, attempted to loosen some of the restrictions that municipalities had over the years put into place with their use. They offered the municipalities a couple of different options. One is to just simply opt into the regulations as written. The second is to write new regulations, and the third was to opt out of the regulations at this point with the thought of rewriting their regulations in the future. The Planning and Zoning Commission, because it's in the middle of a fairly comprehensive rewrite of its zoning regulations, and there's a rewrite going on of the town's affordable housing plan, is making the request to opt out so that they can, in the near future, next year, rewrite the regulations relative to ADUs and incorporate into them some of the provisions that they would wish to keep, you know, into the regulations. So that's why we're asking you to do that. They're not opposed to revising the regulations to make it easier to utilize ADUs, but they just wish to, again, complete their process with the zoning regulations and to tailor them specifically to the town.
Anyone have a question?
And so you're only getting like a one-year extension to make all these changes?
No, actually, if you opt out, you technically have opted out, you know, for the period of time. There's no, there is no period of time to complete it. If you opt out, you opt out. But again, the town wishes to, the Planning and Zoning Commission wishes to incorporate some of those changes into the regs.
I have a question. Do you have to submit our pre-written regulations for approval to anyone?
No, you do not. The state statute just suggests that, advises that any new regulations that are written have to be in compliance with the new state statute. So it's up to us just to make sure that they don't run contrary to the new regulations which will take effect January 1st.
So are we to assume then that our town attorney would be reviewing what's rewritten to make sure that we aren't in conflict anywhere along the line?
Absolutely. Yes.
I'm just curious, if you do not opt out, do they deem you opted in?
That's correct.
They shouldn't do that.
I think the biggest issue with the standards, with the state statute, is that the feeling is that it was poorly worded, and so that's why towns are trying to be more, have more clarification and specificity. Ironically enough, right most of the time when state statutes are written, you don't get a chance to opt out or opt, well, the default is to opt in. You never get a chance to opt out. But I think because of the, as you are certainly aware, the great debate that's been going on with regards to affordable alternative housing, the legislature wanted to give some options in terms of, I think, easing into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I abstain.
Rachel abstained. The motion passes. Item B.
Thank you very much.
I move to authorize an appropriation from the general fund in the amount of $826 to the building maintenance supplies line item for the purchase of a stainless steel counter and sink for the dog pound.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Item C.
I move to approve the job description for the position of social services clerk with the salary range of $35,490 to $45,500.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
Go ahead. Okay. Number one on the.
Into the mic, please.
On the, you know, physical demands and everything, for the social service, it says 20 pounds, but on the HR one, it's 25. Is that just a typo, or are the HR going to be lifting heavier items? I just caught it going through.
Thank you. We did miss that. It should be 25, and the reasoning behind that is if somebody were to have to pick up a ream of paper, we're considering it to be about 25 pounds. So that should be corrected to be 25 pounds to stay consistent.
And also, is this going to be a brand-new position?
Currently, this was a part-time position that we have deemed that it needs to be more of a full-time position. So this will be integrated into the white-collar union, and it will be a 35-hour position.
Okay. So from part-time to full-time, part-time, this person isn't getting any benefits or anything?
They do get partial benefits. Off the top of my head, I could not tell you exactly, but they do have prorated vacation and time off, and I believe that's it.
Okay. But between vacation and a higher rate of pay and everything, what's it going to cost the town additional to make a part-time or full-time?
Whatever the difference in cost of salary would be, for this particular person who is in the position, her benefits would not increase, insurance benefits would not increase because she's already on our plan through her spouse. So the additional cost would be vacation time, which she would then accrue at a full-time rate, and whatever the increase is. We did set a range of pay for this person. It is budgeted for $45,500, which was approved. is. We did set a range of pay for this person. It is budgeted for $45,500, which was approved in the last year's budget. We had discussed that this position would go full-time, and the council did approve that amount of money.
Is it appropriate to ask what this part-time position is paying right now compared to what the full-time position wants to pay? Is that not a question?
It's in, it's in the, it's between $15 and $16. I'm not sure what the...
That they're making right now?
That's correct. I would like to add that there's been other job requirements that are added to this. This is a position that will actually go into the field, responsible for 24/7 crawling, for handling social services needs. And, you know, when we tried to determine even the range of this position, we, there's a lot of things that you probably wouldn't even think about, but managing a range of pay and trying to understand how it's going to affect other employees, because we have excellent employees here who are earning a certain rage, a wage, and we cannot change that wage. If we bring in a, a person who is doing a job, and I'm not demeaning this job in any way, but it was very difficult to understand where do we put them in that range of pay, making sure that they're being compensated properly for the work they're doing, but yet not going and bypassing other staff members who have been working here many years and are in a job that just aren't earning that wage range. And just to answer some of the discussion points regarding crawling and sitting and stooping, everybody seems to be very interested in this position. You have to understand that we need these descriptions in the job descriptions, so that if an employee is injured on the job, we have some criteria on what is needed to bring them back to work or not bring them back to work. And very much specifically for this position, the staff member may need to crawl. They go into homes where there's all kinds of messes in the houses, and if you've never been in a position to actually go into houses that someone needs social services, you probably have no understanding of what that house may be like. So, it's very easy to sit back and say that crawling, stooping, or climbing a ladder may not be important to you. I disagree. And that's the reason why these things are put into these job descriptions. It's not just that it sounds silly, and it does. And to be even more specific, as we do bring in an, an HR person, we will probably go even further and give a percentage that these type of things will happen, so that we have a better understanding as a person were to look at this job description, they could say, okay, I may only have to crawl 2% of the time. There's a chance. Am I going to do it? Maybe not. But I may have to. And that's the reason why these things are put in job descriptions.
Okay, and I just have one more through the chair.
Okay.
On it, it says also that the social service clerk is going to report directly to the human, social, and leisure services. If we weren't going to have an HR person, and this part-time person became full-time, who would that person report to? Or who are they reporting to right now as a part-timer?
I don't understand where the HR person came into play. I misunderstood what you're, I don't think I understand what you're asking.
Okay, on the job description, it provides monthly written reports to the director of humans, human, social, and leisure.
I'm sorry.
But if we don't have one now, who does this person report to?
So, this position, Ms. Carew is our human res, or, I'm sorry, our Director of Human, Social, and Leisure Service, so that's Lisa Carew. This person as a part-time employee is reporting directly to Ms. Carew, and when she becomes, or he or she becomes full-time, they would report to her as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Yes.
Through the chair. For the corrected motion, what would the salary range read then?
Salary range is correct.
Salary range is correct. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a general question, in the opinion of the town manager, is this position necessary for the administration of the town?
I not only think that this position is necessary, I believe we need a social worker to be added to that division. As we look at other towns in the area, a lot of towns are going to a social worker just to have for the town. The police department is in dire need of that position, and it would be beneficial to add it to our Parks and Recreation Department. This position would be underneath a social worker, so we're doing the best we can with what we have. So, yes, it is in need by the town.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. Move on to item D.
I move to approve the job description for the position of Director of Human Resources with the salary range of $85,000 to $96,000.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Madam Chairwoman? Yes. Rachel.
This is Rachel. I, I would just like to echo the, the comments made by, in public participation, that especially a salary that range, it, it seems to me that we should require some degree of higher education. I did have a question about the way that was worded, because it says, the only thing that's required, from my understanding of the reading of it, is that the person needs to have a high school graduate or a GED equivalent. And then it says, associate degree in public administration, human resources, or related field preferred, and then it goes on, and over four years of increasing responsibility and a whole bunch of other different experience-related items. So, am I reading it correctly, that the only thing that's absolutely required is the person has to be a high school graduate or have a GED?
I would like to thank the public for giving your input to this position. We struggled with trying to put parameters for this position. Some of the problems that we face in the town is that we wear multiple hats, we're all generalists, and we try to get the job done as efficiently as possible. I would love to say you need a master's degree for this position. I would love to say we need a bachelor's degree with 10 years of experience. But it, it took us six months to get this position, a job description framed out and get ready to post, because of everything else that's going on in the town, and as we try to develop this position. If we were to do and put those parameters without giving us some leeway to make decisions, we don't get anybody to apply with a master's degree. Now, we have to change that and move it out as a bachelor's degree. I, when we reviewed this, I wanted to put it at a bachelor's degree, so I don't disagree with what was said by the comments from public, because I do think it's a very important position. I've been doing this position for the last two years with support of other staff, and it's very difficult for us to navigate HR responsibilities. But we do, do need to get somebody in for this position. I would not be offended in any way if the council told me to beef up the requirements, but understand that if we don't get people to apply, we're now going to be three months into the hiring position. I know what needs to be put into that position, and I, we would strive to get somebody with a, a degree. We did set the salary at $80,000. You're not going to attract somebody with a master's, master's degree with 10 years of experience to work in this job. They're not going to want to do it. We looked online today, and I forget what town it was, and it was in Fairfield County, just to be fair. It was $196,000 for an HR director. If we want to make our compensation equivalent to what the requirements are that you want, I'm more than open for that. But if you want to bring it in a salary of $80,000, then we need some room to work to get the right person in here. And I, I do have an HR consultant that we worked with, and we had this discussion, that this is going to be an entry-level position or person coming into our organization that we're going to have to help develop, and hopefully they stay with us. If they don't, we're going to train somebody, they're going to go somewhere else, because that's where our price point is. It's trying to do the best we can with what we have.
So, am I correct in saying if the council wishes to pass this position with an increase in requirement, they should also add some additional money?
I would say that, yes. If we were to add some more money to this, and you have to remember, we did budget $80,000. I kicked this up to a range of $96,000, because in this current budget year, we do have money available in that line item, because we have not filled it. And I would be happy to put in the SHRM requirements and, you know, a bachelor's degree. I think that's great. But we're going to have to pay somebody to be interested in that position, and I would like to use the Public Works Director's position. We added money to that, and we ended up with an excellent candidate. He, he's a superstar. Every time he walks in the door, he's, he's doing something for the town. I'm amazed at what he's done so far. But we, we put the money where it was supposed to be. And this is another position that I would think, you know, we should look at compensation, and if you want to address this, we put in the requirements. But you do understand, you do have to go now against other employees who have been here for long term for the town, and what are we saying to them, that they're in here doing an excellent job as well, and we're not going to raise their compensation to meet what the market is at this point? It's a slippery slope.
Council members, comments? Yes.
Through the chair. Is the, the position of director correlated to the amount of money that you're paying? Is, I guess, through, through here and through the public, some of this is because it's at the director level, and a director level isn't entry. So, so did you need it to make it director to make it through the range of 85 to 96?
We talked about it, it's almost marketing. We're looking to direct, have people take attention of the, the marketing. So, a director's position, somebody's going to take a look at the, at our, our advertisement. You know, then they're going to get through, and they're going to get to the salary, and they're going to, you know, most people are going to walk away and say, you know, this isn't a director level salary compared to an entry-level HR person. So, that was more marketing for us. Basically, this person will be a department head, and their title would be director.
Working how many hours are we?
It would be a 35-hour position. We even had some discussion on whether we make this a hybrid position to attract somebody who may have more experience, but yet found that to be an attractive, you know, reason to come work for the town, where maybe they work three days in the town hall and they work two days at home. This allows us to attract somebody in who would have more experience and would be willing to take the reduced amount of pay. There's a lot of things that we, we really worked through to understand how to attract the best person for this position. To sit here and read this and judge it on its face, not having all the background information, again, I think the comments were very well taken, but there was a lot of thought into this process. And again, if the council would like any changes, I'd be happy to change it.
I just have a couple.
Sure.
Going through the job description for this one person, it seems like an awful lot of duties. It seems like there's things that this person will be asked to do that people are doing right now, and would happen, unless I'm reading it wr, I could be reading it wrong.
You're 100% right.
So, if we take away duties from one person, or two, or three, or four, what are they going to do besides what you?
Well, I think, and that's a very good question, I'm glad you brought that up. So, if you think about the HR duties that have been spread out over the departments through members, and our current staff have been doing jobs that they were not ever intended to do, they took on these jobs because nobody else was there to do it. So, now they were doing an HR component, and that's not in their job description, and they've worked all these years doing these jobs and never been compensated for it. So, now we're pulling this back. We actually had several meetings to, to figure out, when we separate these duties, are we, am I going to insult an employee by taking a job away from now they've become comfortable in doing? But we need to funnel HR duties back to an HR position. Don't worry, there's plenty of work for others to get backfilled, things they should be doing. I have to quite often type my own memos, because these scatania is busy doing other things, HR-related. I mean, you know, we've talked about the compensation level for certain staff members. Suzanne Pond does so many HR responsibilities, you know, she has barely enough time to take care of what she's taking care of. We're putting the responsibilities back where it's supposed to be, and then those positions that have carried those duties will then be backfilled by the work that they rightfully should have been doing all along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Through the chair. In reviewing the job description, et cetera, it's a very important position, and I admire the way it was well thought of. The town manager apparently did consult with somebody with human resources experiences, and that, working under the direction of the town manager, basically he's supervising someone with such an important position, to wit, on page two of the description, supervises and oversees workman's compensation claims by working with the insurance companies. Next bullet, oversees, supervises, and performs recruiting services, including but not limited to posting openings internally and externally. There's been problems in the past, different departments, jobs have been posted internally and/or externally. They have to be bid for. Finally, develops training programs for employees, including management and supervisory personnel, conducts human resource seminars on relevant topics. And finally, supervises, administers, and assists with paperwork for employees resign, retire, or terminate, such as their potential benefits, Medicare supplements, et cetera, and processes and administers all employee pension and retirement requests. This can't be done in a scattergun approach, disseminating such responsibilities to individual town departments. Somebody should oversee these matters. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I don't, we talked, is this just going to be taking care of the town employees, or is this going to be part of, shared with the Board of Ed?
So, the town has about approximately 175 full and part-time employees. To ask a HR person to then handle another additional, this is just a rough estimate, 460 employees. It's just, we're not, that position would not be able to handle it. If at some point that we evolve into an HR department, we could consider at some point, you know, overseeing Board of Education. But I think with so many unions involved and so much work involved with that amount of people, it's just not feasible at this point. It would be strictly on our side.
Yeah, okay.
And then the opinion of the town manager, is this position necessary for the minimum essential administration of the town?
I'm going to answer you as an attorney asking me the question, yes.
Okay.
I do. Again, I'm not open, I am very much open to change those requirements. I struggled with that. I just felt that having that flexibility, knowing the market is not on our side at this moment to attract these types of people under this position. Completely open to change if I need to.
Because there seems to be, I don't want to say controversy, but discussion about the potential of additional responsibilities, additional compensation, et cetera. If you do not get an applicant that you feel is really qualified, you can bring this back to us again for more money and revamping of the whole thing. In other words, we don't want to see you just hire somebody in order to fill it if, in fact, they're not, you don't feel they're capable.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I think that we could add a bachelor's degree, and that's where I wanted to go with this, as a baseline, with allowing myself to have some adjustment to take into account experience. Using Ms. Catania as an example, she has a, a degree in human resources with a tremendous amount of experience. She probably can take this job and run circles around anybody that would come into that position. You know, but she understands the responsibility of that position, so she would not... You know, but she understands the responsibility of that position, so she would not be interested. Because I've tried. I'm sorry for having my pointless, but I think that we, if I changed this to a bachelor's degree, leaving some leeway so that we can make that decision with experience and, you know, certifications through SHRM or any of the mainstream, I could make those adjustments, put this out there, and see what we get.
All right, so we need an amendment to the motion indicating that we are modifying the job description to include a requirement of a bachelor's degree.
Minimal.
Bachelor's degree or a combination of schooling and experience to meet that requirement.
To me, though, if I, if I may, it essentially says that now.
Yeah.
You may want to, we may just want to leave it open-ended, and obviously, the town manager can, in his discretion, can, you know, prefer the highest degree possible, I would, you know. I mean, it essentially says that, but unless you want to make bachelor's man, necessary, which I don't think you're saying that.
I would prefer the option, because again, I don't know what we're going to attract for this position. I'm hoping we get somebody in here who's five years from retiring, wants other five years.
All right, so we'll vote on it the way it is and...
Okay. And I understand what you want.
Use your discretion that we would prefer, obviously, someone with a degree.
Yes.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Rachel.
Might I make a suggestion? Is it possible to change the language so that you're not requiring either a bachelor's degree or experience, but one or the other? So instead of it just requiring a high school degree, there needs to be either some sort of higher level degree or some level of experience, because there's, you know, three to four years, senior level of management, two to four years of labor relations. I feel like one of those two things needs to be required.
I think our discussion has just indicated that the manager is going to handle that in the interview process.
Okay, I just, I'll just state for the record that I won't support it the way it is. I would support it with changing the language to require either a level of experience or a higher level of a degree.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion as it was read? Please say it.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I oppose.
One opposed, anyone abstaining? Motion passes. Move on to item E.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between line items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed or abstaining? The motion passes unanimously. And the last one, please.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an appropriation from the town general fund in the amount of $6,409.42 for tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes. And item G.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
No, can I just clarify something first before we adjourn?
Not if it's not on...
Pardon?
Not if we've already passed it on the agenda. Motion to adjourn? We could clarify for you, just not on, on the record, because we passed that item.
Recording stopped.